Go ahead. At this time, I will call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four at twelve oh one P. M. And I would remind everybody that this is a business meeting of the township, but we would ask you to keep your comments to a minimum and if you need to take a phone call, please step out. At this time, I would ask Chief Smith if he would open us with prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day of life given us. Lord, we ask that you bless these proceedings, bless each and every person in attendance, give us a clear heart, clear conscience, and may we do what's best for the residents of our township. We pray all this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Smith, will you lead us in the prayer?
Do you know it?
My pleasure. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mazur, ready for a roll call? Please give us a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleisch?
Present.
All right. We'll move into old business. Mr. Mazur, shakers. Let's take you right off the bat. Would you like to do the swearing of the firefighter first and?
We can do that.
Okay.
We can do that. I.
Can you be ahead on that swearing in?
So we'll just do the shakers first then, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's do shakers. Julie, is this something that you want to discuss with the trustee? I see Mr. Wood is here.
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, we'll just go my office.
Mr. Wood is here, perhaps we. Hi, Julie. We spoke on the phone earlier this week. So, Mr. Wood contacted our office. I know that he's been in touch with the trustees as well. Since you're here, if you'd like to, it's a pleasure of the board, if the board would like to perhaps hear Mr. Wood speak, and then I'm happy to, again, we can move into executive session, just to kind of discuss the business process and all of that, but yeah, Mr. Wood said.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Okay. How are you guys today?
Well, we've been better.
But go ahead. All right. We've been working on the property over there, doing some cleanup. I'd like to straighten up a misunderstanding from Mr. Fleishman. There is no graffiti over there. I personally checked myself with my own eyes, and it has not been graffiti. There was some on the building too, which down before the full listing. So we've hauled out about six large dumpsters full of trash out over there. I saw some pictures that you guys have submitted. We had guys over there working when we were taking pictures, apparently because the doors were open. And so you saw a pile of trash. We've been sweeping up the parking lot, and so what we saw was our work process, and so that pile was gone. We've taken some components out inside to clean up the area and off the floor and continue to do that process. We're trying to work through this so we don't go into that violation, and so we're trying to hash that out with you.
The last time you was here, you said you'd be back in a month. It's now been six weeks.
I sent in a report to you.
Have you seen a report?
I haven't seen a report. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mazur, have you seen the report?
I do. I just think Mr. Wood was highlighting what he proposed from last time we met.
Okay.
Well, that, to clarify that, I was making a report that.
Well, we asked you, when this was originally set up, to come in and address the board, not send a report, but to come in and address the board. And this is only the second time that you've been in since the first meeting.
Well, this is my fourth report.
Wait a minute. I'm talking now. You have your time to talk, and we're not going to do this like you always do.
Well, it's not an argument.
But you said that the last time you were here, that you were going to have a roofer in contract. Where's the contract for the roofer?
We do not have a roofer under contract. That was not going to work out. We're still trying to do that. I have a meeting Saturday as part of that. Part of the problem is.
Go ahead.
Part of the problem with that is I have tried to contact Mr. Tool twice and have not gotten a response back from him. I can't get in communication with him. I have asked Ms. Julie if we could get in the three-way conversation about that topic.
Have you pulled a demo permit?
And I'm glad you asked me that, because on Monday, I was told that we need to give one.
Have you pulled one?
Nope.
And how are you in the property demoing and taking stuff out without a building, without a demo permit?
Well, we are working on that. I just found out Monday that.
Everything from you, no, hang on. Everything from you is we're always working.
We are.
You said six weeks together, you was going to have a contract in hand in a month to bring to us at the next meeting that you was going to be at. Now we're here our six weeks down the road, and you haven't brought, you still don't have a contract for the roof, and you don't have a building, a demo permit. I don't know how many times you want to kick the can down the road. Mr. Fleishman, you have anything?
One of the things, obviously, I wanted to demo it. The other two, I went along with them and said that, okay, we'll see what we can do. We've heard the song and dance about the family and, you know, it's a failed position. Want to bring it back. I get that. I totally understand that. I appreciate that. So I thought, okay, I'm going to use the one guy, the other two. I still could have said no, and it still would have passed, but under the contingency, you are to be here at every meeting, at least one meeting a month, to report. And you were going on vacation, I understood right after that. So some of this I look at is, I would find the camp at the door. I would make sure either myself or someone else is here, even if there's nothing to report. If you can't get a hold of Mr. Tools or et cetera, I would have checked with Steve. I mean, there's a lot that I would have done different than you would have done, I guess. I don't know. I don't know what you're scheduled on, the day is like, if you're living on time, but I did go by there the other day, and in my opinion, it's time to let it go. With all the things that are going on in that area, the development that is coming, you know, we gave you a total, I believe, so was that six months?
Mm-hmm.
And we're into three months?
Closer to four.
Four months. There is no way in two months that that would be ready to open, in my opinion, and in the schedule that we are moving, because realistically, six weeks, how many weeks are we talking? Six weeks?
More than that.
Eight, twelve weeks or so? Well, in the timeframe that you have been here and the conditions in which they set forth, the only thing that's happened is a room has been pushed around, a few things have been picked up, and boarding has went up. Actual physical work on the building itself has been zero.
He said, now he said he's removed stuff without a permit.
Well, what we were doing was cleaning out the parking lot and that back area and hauling out just trash that was on the floor.
But do you see, with someone, if someone, you know, you came to this board and you saw that, I barely got this. I would work like heck to make sure that I got a contractor the next day, because your time is running out. It's sand in an hourglass. There is, in my opinion, there's no way you're going to make this. Even if you get a contractor on Saturday for a roof, he's probably just going to tell you, you can't start for another two weeks. Then by the time you get the supplies, get it there, in my opinion, there's no way you're going to make it in the timeframe that it's been given to you. I personally do not want to extend any more time to it. We've already taken care of the other one, the issues that we have with it, the homeless, everything else that goes with that. To me, it would be better served and safer for the public if it was torn down. That's me.
And we also ask you to put a construction fence around it to keep the issue of homeless out and the site secure. Still, four months later, nothing. I think we've been above and we've went above and beyond to work with you, and you keep kicking the can down the road. Mr. Blevins, do you have anything?
I don't regret that I wanted to give you the six months, because I'm always going to err on the side of small business, because it owns a near and dear place in my heart with my parents having a business like that, or business, small business for many years. But on this circumstance right here, I regret the fact that I was taken in and believed what you had to say to the board, and you haven't met one benchmark, and that's my own. The only thing I would say is, if you're on this board and you're a no, then vote no. Don't come back four months later and say, well, I was a no, but I voted yes. I do that all the time. I vote how I feel. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. I'll make a motion that we move into an executive session, motion to adjourn into the executive session, according to the high revised code, section one-two-one dot twenty-two dot G and dot three, for the purposes of a conference with the attorney concerning dispute with a, with the board, and that is subject to a pending and intermittent court action.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
Hold return. Oh, we're going into executive session at twelve thirteen.
Right. Seats office.
Thank you.
I'll shut the door too.
You may want to shut that off.
I'm going to pause that.
I'll make a motion that the board of trustees come out of executive session with no decisions made. I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? We've given you six months.
No, 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 not given from.
No, we gave you six months to take, to take care of this property. We ask you to show up every month to give us a progress report, and every time, it's been a song and a dance of why you can't get it done. We put, we put some strong, we suggested some strong things at the beginning to help you with this progress, and you have just ignored them. But we are men of our word. We'll give you, we'll give you up to your six months mark, which I believe is October thirty-first. But this is my, my opinion, and I would ask the second quarter. But we would need to have, at the next meeting in two weeks, a contractor for the roof, a fence around the building, a demo permit, and Ms. Julie, can you tell us on the bond part portion of this?
Yes. So the board has discussed, I know we've talked about with the fire laws and the insurance side of things. I don't believe that the board is interested in a bond per se, but funds in escrow to, again, which the township should have right now, but they do not. And so either in escrow with a title company or that type of thing, there needs to be approximately thirty thou, thirty-five?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes. Now, like we said, we gave you until October thirty-first, and you have yet to meet one of your, one of the benchmarks. You can't even make it to a meeting regularly when you say you're going to be here. So we'll see in two weeks where we go, but we need to see progress. It's not fair to these residents that live in this township to have to drive past the ISO that that has become. And I would ask a second on the motion that we extend to the fact that he comes in two weeks, has to have a security bond for thirty-five thousand, I'm sorry, escrow, right? Escrow for thirty-five thousand dollars, must have a building, must have a, at least a demo permit, because I'm sure you don't have building plans yet.
When you're trying to get in contact.
No, 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 no. Do you or don't you have a set of plans?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's good. That's all I ask you. You know, the song and dance you should keep doing is not working anymore here. The motion would be that he would have a demo permit and a roofing contractor in contract and have a construction fence erected around the property.
And sir, you, if I may, you said an extension. I would not say this is an extension. This is.
No.
This is not an extension whatsoever. Continuation of where we are. This is, you know, catching you up to date of what's expected, so it's not an extension.
No. Do you still have the drop dead deadline of October thirty-first?
How can I, I need your help with Mr. Tool.
Yeah, we'll handle that.
Mr. Tool can, can come through.
And he will, yeah, he will be through.
Mr. Tool will come back.
He'll be expecting a property here soon.
And I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Mike, you have any more discussion on it?
Well, the only thing I wanted to change is, I would like to see him come back every two weeks.
Yes.
In person.
Yeah, you need to report to the board every two weeks in person of where you're at, what you're moving forward, where's your set of plans and everything.
And that was expected from day one.
Yeah, that was expected. You're supposed to be once a month, but obviously, you can't make it once a month. So we're going to make it every two weeks.
I did send an email to.
In person.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I just like to add world rep if I can.
No. You're representing them. You took this responsibility on. It will be yourself.
It's just hard to deal with somebody else, because they're not going to have the answers. We've dealt with you. We read you loud and clear. Believe me when I tell you that, I told you at the podium. I read you loud and clear, so.
The last time that you didn't come and we said something, the next time you came, you're like, oh, I didn't realize. We made it very clear after the first meeting you missed, just like they're going in here. So this isn't nothing new.
I couldn't make it, so I sent an email.
Are you here for the meeting?
Yes.
The email, from what I understand, that you sent in was just basically, it didn't say you wasn't going to be here, so that, there's no way for us to know that you weren't going to be here if the email didn't say, oh, I can't make it, X, Y, and Z. So we didn't, how are we supposed to know that that's what happened?
Well, we're splitting hairs. I communicated with you, and so I will be here every two weeks.
We have a motion on the floor.
Appreciate it.
And in a second, I would call for a roll call. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, looks like we, thank you, Julie, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking for you.
You ready? I'm ready.
We have, we have, one of the best things we get to do is fire, between swearing in firefighters and swearing in police officers, it's always a great thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we understand. Sorry. Busy man. I'll state.
Okay. Well, we'll have the troops that just went on their portable firework west of here, so it'll just be us. This is our new hire, Evan Snyder. He'll start Sunday. So basically, we're just going to swear you in. So if you just want to raise your right hand and just kind of follow along.
Okay.
Read that for me.
Okay.
I, Evan Snyder.
I, Evan Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will in all respects obey and comply with.
And I will in all respects obey and comply with.
The rules, regulations, and resolutions as set forth.
The rules, regulations, and resolutions as set forth.
By the Franklin Township Board of Trustees.
By the Franklin Township Board of Trustees.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of my employment.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of my employment.
There you go. Commitment.
Thank you.
You would do the pinning thing, Mike.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is.
You're asleep.
I won't ever sleep here.
What am I, a ten dollar?
No, you're a dollar fifty.
Come on up here, guy.
I'll get out of here.
Dollar.
Come on up here, brother.
Nice.
That's probably ruined out.
Have you phoned yet?
I'll go pick my gun.
Have you phoned yet?
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, sir.
Goodbye.
Welcome aboard, young man.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There he is. Look in the room. Mr. Fullcheck, will you please give us a audit update?
Yep, I will. Over the past couple of weeks, actually longer, but I've been back and forth with the auditors, Mark Long, trying to reconcile all of the audit adjustments, along with the various other transactions that were corrected from the period of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. What you have in front of you is the summary. What I can tell you is the number at the bottom that I circled on first page, the million three twenty-five seven thirty-nine, is the fund balances at December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Okay? Just twenty nineteen, because today's, the fund balances are much higher. However, there are adjustments yet to be posted to the accounting system as a result of Mark and I going back and forth, reconciling all these adjustments, okay? I will have those figured out here very shortly, and I know the number, million three twenty-five, is not going to change, but I just received another message from Mark, questioning something he's looking into, and I'll have an answer tomorrow. So my suspicion is this potential that one or two funds might have a number of changes, but in total, we are at the million three twenty-five. Once I get final information from Mark, I will send to each of you a spreadsheet that has all of the adjustments that I've made from seventeen through nineteen to try and get things reconciled and cleaned up, along with the audit adjustments, so that you'll see the extent of these things and how bad the records were in that time period, okay? I will also include, by taking it a little bit longer, the final numbers for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, because these adjustments are affecting the other four years, and the financial statements have to be revised to reflect the correct balances moving forward. So I will have that done within the next couple of weeks. My understanding is Mark will be telling the Columbus Audit Region that in a couple of weeks, this will be done, and those financial statements will be passed on to Lindsay. I will CC you on the email. Lindsay is here. And she will have to pass those on to whoever has to get them, including the new audit staff, okay? We're getting much closer to having this wrapped up.
You answered one of my questions. I said, with this being, like, getting this and having the variance of zero, I thought we'd get towards.
Well, there's approximately, not knowing what Mark has in store for me for tomorrow, right now, what was in this week somewhere in the vicinity of ninety thousand dollars that we could not reconcile at the end of nineteen is down to about twenty-one thousand. Now, that said, there's still, I mean, if you saw the list of the checks that never cleared the bank, that we don't know what happened with them, that we can understand why we have problems. If you saw the thousand rows in the spreadsheet that was given to me when I got here of transactions in question that I went through, and I picked all the great big ones, took care of those, and got those taken care of. So you can understand the mess that we had to clean up, okay? Unfortunately, some of it did carry into twenty. I've got that reconciled and cleaned up, but all these audit adjustments will affect the heavy balances for each year, and I'm going to take that into account, get it posted in the accounting system. So that will be taken care of here very soon, okay?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't think this is the time I spoke to Mark, school officer would be here, but, I mean, I did see the budget, each of you that was turned in. I know that we can make adjustments, but I have grave concern about monies that is going to be, the fact that it was turned in late, in the sum of two hundred thousand dollars that the residents are going to lose, out on in paving, et cetera, with the late miles, because of the natural chance of mine, that's my opinion, being turned in late, that it's never been turned in late, and the argument may be it wasn't turned in late, it got an extension, but what was turned in and the errors that I saw, in my opinion, and then the penalties in which we are going to, it's not just us, but the residents of Franklin Township are going to endure, someone's going to have to pay for that.
I agree, but I don't know if that's something to discuss.
I don't know. Clarification. You're talking about the tax budget for two thousand and twenty-five, which was submitted this past month.
Yes, sir.
Not the adjustments that we're talking about here, okay?
No, just the fact that you were standing there the last meeting or meeting before. I know that she said she would be here. I know that, I've heard it, heard it, heard it, that she's not showing up at meetings for you and et cetera, et cetera, and I believe when she said, I'll be there on Monday morning, nine A. M., again, it wasn't till nine thirty, nine thirty-five, whatever it was, it's just, it's, I haven't said anything. I don't want to, I'd rather her been here, but I've been down this road, and that's what got us to this over the years. Going to this date, I'm one of the ones that's piled an affidavit to be able to try to get this looked at. I never dreamed that we were in the shape that we were in when I did that, and here we are eight years later.
In all fairness to for everybody here, I've been telling you, I'm trying to get to a point where I'm retiring.
Absolutely, and that's what's serious.
And I've been backing off and doing less and less. So I did agree to look over the tax budget. I sat here with her on a couple of different occasions, walked her through what was going on. Those road funds were correct at one point. What happened with the one, I don't know, that there's some numbers that were deleted. Mr. Blevins sat here one day as I worked with Lindsay. I'm telling you, she deleted formulas, she overwrote the formulas in the spreadsheets. The numbers were in the wrong columns at times. She's pulling numbers off the reports from the accounting system wrong. She barely knows how to work her way around Excel, let alone, and or formula that could be as easy as adding up two numbers.
But what is.
I pointed out to her on the screen numerous times, all the places she had to replace the formulas that she overlooked.
The part that, that I hated, I had to sign off on that, irregardless if it was right or wrong or not. I had no choice. I had to say yes. I could not say no, because the township and the township monies would be at great danger if.
alone, and our formula that could be as easy as adding up two numbers.
But what is...
I pointed out to her on the screen numerous times, all the places she had to replace the formulas that she overlooked.
The part that, that I hated, I had to sign off on that, irregardless if it was right, wrong, or not, I had no choice, I had to say yes. I could not say no, because the township and the township monies would be at great danger if I would have said no. If this board were to say, no, we're not passing it, and we didn't turn it in, we would be in worse shape than we are with two hundred thousand that we're not going to get.
And that two hundred thousand affects the road district, it's one fund in the tax budget.
Okay.
The rest of the funds are based upon the existing levies, so those will not be affected, even though there are some other mistakes in that document.
Can you explain for me, to me, what that means? Does that mean salt? Does it mean paving? What does that mean?
The fund that it's in typically is used to meet Mr. Stevens' paving needs.
Okay.
Okay? So you're losing out on a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of money that could be used for paving projects.
And we can't get that back.
That remains to be seen and up to you guys to have a conversation with the Budget Commission as to whether you can amend that document and change things. I don't know legally whether the Budget Commission has the authority to do it, that's a conversation you have to have.
I don't think we've ever been in a situation where it's been turned in like this. The situations were totally different that you worked on compared to these situations.
I will tell you that back prior to twenty-twenty, they were ugly, those tax budgets. Now, also I want to stress that the tax budget leads to the next step, which is setting the appropriation budget for twenty-twenty-five. So the expenditures that are estimated in there and the estimated revenues are subject to revision, and they will get revised as you go through the process of establishing your budget for twenty-twenty-five. In other words, the appropriations that, if all goes well, you will approve in December for the first of January of twenty-five.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can, and this is unprecedented, I'd like to hear from Mr. Stevens what that means to him, because I think this board needs to be addressed, so we have an idea what's going on. If you have anything that you, if this is new to you, or if you...
Well, no, I did, well, in a way, it's kind of new to us here about here a couple days ago, you know, that this was happening. Ultimately, within our road district fund, it's going to hit us for around two hundred and six thousand dollars less than what we had last year. And I know in the years past, when we would sit down prior to submitting the budget to the Budget Commission, we'd sat down with Jeff on a couple of years with a list of the roads that we're wanting to pave, with a projection of what we're planning to do, because that's what you, you have to turn that in as an expense.
Sure.
You have to turn that in as an expense. That way, when you get to the Budget Commission, you can get, I think we can get, what, two point three four mil, I think is what it is. And then right now, because that conversation never took place, I was never asked to sit down and say, hey, here's what we've got coming up, we're down to one point seven four mil now. So it's going to affect what we have projected, what we wanted to get paid, which we've done a pretty good job the last couple of years of getting our roads done, what we have projected on what we wanted to get paid for next year. That list is now, it's going to really affect us.
So to the board, I think that we need to have a conversation with legal and two-five-two, I can't remember the O R C number, but negligence in that, in this office, for the taxpayers that are sitting here, that are even residents, we need to enact so that we can either include under a bond issue or personal monies, that that monies due to negligence comes back to the township. So I think that's a conversation we need to start with legal to find out what our next steps are to protect those funds that we lost. And that's all I have, sir. And thank you, I know I took that sideways, but...
It's okay.
I was hoping Ms. Justice was going to be here today, I didn't know she was on vacation. I'm not afraid to have the conversation with her here, because it's, it's funding instead of the taxpayer's dollars, and I find it very disturbing that just by not getting it on time meant that we lost two hundred and six thousand dollars. That's a heck of a hard slip.
Yeah.
I would...
I will tell you, at one point, there were five hundred and some thousand dollars listed as expenditures in that fund, which meant we would not have lost that. But somewhere along the lines in subsequent copies, there's some numbers that got deleted.
And I know that you've been here on numerous occasions, and it can get heated that she just won't show up, and she won't be there for what we hired you to do as a CPA.
What I can tell you, Mr. Flushing, is I've been at this forty-seven years. I have trained many fiscal officers.
And you're a fiscal officer yourself, is that incorrect?
Yes, and I had a career of thirty years with the Audit Office of State's Office, teaching people how to do this. Big difference that exists with all the people that I've dealt with in the past, they were willing to assume the responsibility for the position, and they invested the time to learn to do the job. This job, if you just invest fifteen, twenty hours a week, you would know it after a year. And you would be able to deal with posting receipts, posting the bills, paying the bills, payroll, the budget process.
Now, I have noticed that we have a resolution that every Thursday at noon, between the trustees have from noon to, I believe it's five o'clock, to sign checks. Now, today, there's checks, last Thursday's no checks. I'm concerned about when I'm not signing checks, is that a month that a vendor is not getting paid, and are we getting late fees? Because we're not paying our bills on time, because a bill can't be paid unless the three signatures are on it.
Your best bet is to ask Robin on the timeliness. What I can tell you is, every other week, I know she takes care of the accounts payable, in other words, the checks that are sitting in front of you, and on the off weeks, she has payroll to deal with. She has time to process all the payrolls that the employees will get paid timely.
Oh, absolutely, I understand. But we've always had something on Thursday, every Thursday, to go out. I know Robin is, I've got to say this, with Robin being there, if Robin wasn't the steward of what she does, we would be in worse shape. I don't even want to know where we're at, I'm just thinking of the doomsday, but a lot of credit goes to the work that she does, and the, you know, yes, she has a boss, but I don't know where the boss is, but she is diligent in what she's done. But again, that's not our office, we have no say in that office as trustees. But I was concerned that I see...
When it comes to money not coming into the township...
Absolutely, that's where, it's on us.
Yeah.
And especially when I'm asked to sign my name and vote yes on a budget, that I'm looking at it going, there's no more sand in the hourglass. You have to sign this, you have to get it in, or we're in worse shape than we're in. And I hate being put in that predicament, because I'm on time for everything, if not early. I take my job seriously, I'm elected by the people of the township.
I think this is something, I don't think this pertains to this, but it is, it's something that we do need to discuss, but I don't think when you take Mr. Wilczek anymore his time.
I do have a meeting to prepare for.
I remember you telling me that and...
But I do thank you, I know we went to the side, but I needed some clarification.
But I do, I do believe that we need to have a discussion, and I...
I spent four years here cleaning things up, helping Robin learn to do the job, Nick and Mary, we've got a lot of things taken care of. So fortunately, for the newer audits, once you get up to twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe, we'll begin to reflect all the changes that have been placed, okay? I hate to see things go downhill, because I've invested a lot of time here taking...
Yeah.
And we've invested a lot of money.
Yeah.
Not just to you, but to the state of Ohio.
But I get it, you know, anyone that does their craft in what they do, and they step back and look at it, and someone just slings ping on it, you're like, that took me eight years.
Before you take off, I'm looking down here, I know it's under the administrator, but I have a letter of engagement resolution, Mr. Mazur for, Mr. Wilczek.
We do. Twenty-twenty-four, one-eight.
Just go ahead and do that now, since he's standing here, so he can, you don't have to watch it, what we vote for.
Appreciate that.
Hi, Chairman, it's resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one-one-eight, the resolution to provide supplemental appropriations number nine for the period commenced in January one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas it's necessary to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio during the year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, and whereas the annual appropriations, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-seven-zero for the period from January one, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, needs to network. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. So as presented and exhibit B attached, hereby set aside and appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for and during the year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved on that resolution as it's written, I'd ask for a second.
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a...
What's the wrong one?
I wasn't going to stop you using a roll.
Comment on that.
Yeah.
That request for supplemental appropriation addresses a few different things. Workers' compensation, what was initially appropriated was insufficient, and that goes back to the fact that workers' comp was significantly under in their estimate for wages for the township, so it bulked up the premiums quite a lot. That had to be taken place. There was an increase, or is an increase, the request for the H R A with, I believe, the fire department, to the tune of about forty or fifty thousand, because through the appropriations already, that was set up for H R A payments.
Eighty thousand.
Yeah, that includes workers' comp too, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Workers' comp in all funds was not affected, just a small number of them, and I think there was a couple other small things that we did some additional appropriations for, but off the top of my head, I don't recall, without looking at my file, but Robin's got the detail on it, so.
We got...
That was not my engagement letter.
That's your engagement letter.
First of all, we need to do a vote on that resolution.
Okay. Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now, his engagement letter.
That is twenty-twenty-four dash one-two-two, and accepting the engagement letter twenty-nine between Jeff Wilczek and the Franklin Township Board of Trustees, pre-resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the Board approves accepting engagement letter number twenty-eight between Jeff Wilczek, CPA retired, and the Franklin Township Board of Trustees for one hundred hours at fifty-five dollars an hour for a total of fifty-five hundred dollars. And there's an exhibit attached with his engagement letter.
And I have to find here what I will cover for those one hundred hours. Dominantly, it's going to be sentencing up, correcting the financial statements of twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty to twenty-three. I need to meet with Mr. Stevens, if he can resolve the, what is referred to as E H B fifty reimbursements to the road funds that's out there, and that was an audit issue that's still hanging out there, we've got to look at twenty-twenty, I think, forward on that. There's two other items listed there too, so I've got to fix the budget information with the Budget Commission for twenty-four, because the fund balances have changed, or will be changing, so they need to be updated there also.
So moved as the resolution's written, and I'd ask for a second.
One second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Flushing?
Yes.
Uh, thank you.
Real quick, before you jump away from there, I just want to, because I was accused of it, we have had several conversations, I call you frequently, trying to educate myself on the budget and things like that, so I just wanted to let the people know that I am new at all of this, but I am trying to, and I just wanted you to basically verify that I have reached out to you and...
Anybody who did, you know, in the township here...
Yep, I think we've all had...
Officially, okay?
Well, you guys know it all.
You call and ask me a question, I'm going to answer it, I'm not going to pass the buck. Answer the question, we'll get it through time.
That's been my experience.
Yeah. Might not have been the answer we wanted to hear, but... Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, doesn't look like, we got, you're Franklin County Sheriff, Chris?
Here. Ms. Cologne, were you speaking at all?
Okay.
Then I'll do it.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, Board. My name's Detective Dan Pham with the Sheriff's Office. I recently, I don't have what you guys would typically receive today, a report. I'm here basically explaining my new role with the Sheriff's Office. Recently, within the last three months, I took over the role of environmental investigator. What that means for townships that I'm going around, basically introducing myself, I've already had the opportunity to meet with Steve, Mr. Stevens, on a couple of occasions in the Chief of Police. What I have brought today is some info to leave behind, just in case residents come to the Township Trustees asking, what's the best course of action? We have problem areas, how do we address them? For everyone in attendance, it is it'sacrime.org. This is a website that's operated by SUECO, that then tracks countywide, that then distributes the complaints, whether they're in the city of Columbus or in the unincorporated areas, for me to investigate. With that being said, this, we've got Carol?
Yeah.
Did you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we do have some issues with the website on, on our relationship to work out. With that, I will stand for questions.
So my question is very frustrating, I get the pictures, not frustrating for you, ma'am, very frustrating that these people, whoever they may be, back in their dump, and it's like, just going right across the street. We, they're doing it, like, not being seen, or can't get a tag number, can't get any information. What can we do as far as setting, do you have any tools in the toolbox to set up cameras, something that we're able to facilitate and hopefully maybe catch somebody?
So what we have in place right now are limited resources that are pretty archaic. We have trail cameras that are able to be deployed. However, within the last month, I've had two of them removed and cut down and stolen from me. So that kind of limits us. Now, what we have proposed, and is a meeting upcoming with SUECO, is the flock company with the cameras that are deployed around Franklin County in an effort to try and update, so where even if they are removed, we would have record as to who they are.
On the trail cameras, you're obviously not using the cell, cell capable ones, that would help too.
It would, unfortunately...
Your phone would never shut off.
Yeah, what we have are the, I believe, uh...
S D card.
They are S D card, I can't remember the brand name, but yeah, within the last month, two of them, cut down on two different sites, that was certainly.
No G P S on them either?
No. I'd need you.
But not, it's frustrating.
Not doing what you're doing. Correct me if I'm wrong, you used to be in S R O?
I was, I was at Franklin Heights for seven years.
A lot of your children and grandchildren may know it.
Yeah, it was one of the greatest times of my career, was being over there with those kids.
I knew you used to love it over there.
Oh, yeah, I had a great time.
Time to move on?
It was, it was, you know, carrying around a, wearing a vest all day, it's getting kind of old on the back of the hips.
Let's not talk about back. But we appreciate you, and you can come to our meetings, every meeting if you want.
Okay.
Once a month, whatever, we do go up here and back with you. So it also gives our residents a chance to see you before the meeting and say, hey, we have this problem.
Well, again, let me reiterate that it'sacrime.org is the fastest, quickest way, gets immediately populated, and then where I, comes right to my dashboard, and then goes into my casework.
Yep, we prefer them to go there, but some of our residents I know will come to you.
Well, we still do have the webs, or, I mean, not the webs, the telephone number, that's on the signs for Nail a Dumper. I believe it's eight-seven-one number.
Carol?
Okay.
Yeah, it's eight-seven-one, fifty-three, twenty-two, right there on the business cards.
So we appreciate you. Mr. Flushing, you have anything for me?
I don't.
All right.
Do you have any, relax, Mr. Maclevins, was it Heights?
No.
No?
Since he's introducing himself, I will, I will open the floor for questions, if anyone has any, real quick, one question a person.
Is it all in regards to dumping, the legal dumping?
Primarily, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Cologne, did you want a chance to introduce yourself?
I've been before.
Have you? Perfect. She's a great asset for us at the Sheriff's Office.
She is. Are you still out of nine, nine hundred building?
No, no, my office is downtown now.
Lucky you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, moving on to nine twenty-eight Harrisburg Pike.
That'd be me.
Okay.
So I asked for that to be put on there. So it's nine oh six and nine twenty-eight Harrisburg Pike. So it's a car lot and then they take the next two, um, plots next to it and they, uh, removed everything and it's down to the dirt. Um, but both of those properties are zoned residential and they've got cars on them and everything else. And so what I'd like you other, you two gentlemen to do is take a drive down there sometime and take a look at it and go down Harrisburg Pike. Because Harrisburg Pike is going to turn into McKinley Avenue if we do not do something about it. I come this way, I actually have semi-trailers that are working on their vehicles and they were blocking the sidewalk right down the road here. I have a grave concern with this and I know he changes his name, but at one time it was called Mark Price Enterprise. It's on the opposite side of the road. It's where the, you agreed to let the man put in the container. And you and I had a conversation, John, and you said they put huge restrictions on him at zoning when he put that in there. And I went back and looked and it was supposed to be containers. So now the people have, Hopkins get to look out their back door and they get to see semi trucks. He has semi trucks lined up across that whole back end. And then on the next side, he has car haulers lined up there and he has a few dumpsters sat in the middle. There is, there is cement nowhere there. And you had told me there was supposed to be a huge amount of cement. And people were not allowed to speak their mind. It was ironic that you went to a meeting and said how people were poorly treated at the zoning or wherever you was at. Well, that's exactly how the people were treated from Humphreys because they were not able to speak because the board gave a letter of support to him.
So if we are noting this, have we noted this to Franklin County?
Well, actually I turned it in to Nicole and she's working on it. And that's why Mr. Mazur and I had the conversation we had this morning about, uh, the gentleman is, uh, they're under the understanding that, uh, me calling them that I work for Mr. Mazur. So, um, basically was told that I wasn't to call there. I was to go through Mr. Mazur and then Nicole. Basically, I let them know that Nicole was doing exactly what I asked her to do.
Yeah, see, they, they were to, I mean, it was pretty strict exactly what they could do. It was spelled out exactly the timeframe that they could be there and et cetera. So Franklin County allowing this, um, we, Mr. Mazur, can you fill in what they're saying? Or I'm lost at this. Are they, they're aware that they're doing this? And this is Mark Gray.
Uh, I, I, I'm just being brought up to speed. I had a couple of conversations with the Assistant Director from Franklin County Economics and Development. So I'm still being brought up to speed on this. The county is looking at it. They have an administrator who's taking a personal interest in this and I believe she is finding violations on the property. I can't, I can't win that anymore than that.
You probably don't share much more than that, would you?
Who?
County.
I, I, yeah, I take wind right now with our convers, in my conversations with the county administrators.
Basically, gentlemen, the triangle is the biggest block of properties and voting and that we have. They are the biggest ones and they get the least of amount of attention. We need to pay more attention to these people in the triangle than going there once every four years and promise them things and say we're gonna do things for them. And then people come to you and me included, say, you said you were gonna stop this. Look at Harrisburg Pike, look at, it's the old dawn's market for the people in the room. Have been there a long time. Just drive down Harrisburg Pike when you leave here, it does, it'll turn your stomach, I promise you. And it needs to be addressed.
Where are we at with, I talked with the city of Columbus in regards to the semis parked out on the sidewalks themselves. And that used to be the old pond shop where you could pond your car.
Sams were in the trailer back in the day also, sir.
Yes, yes.
So the chief can tell you where we're at because I brought it to his attention. I've called twice. I think Officer Kidwell's been there once. And I believe we're at the point where we're gonna write tickets the next time. Am I right, sir?
Yeah, we're talking about the auto pond.
Where the semi trucks are parked on the sidewalk.
Yes.
So I mean, we're, we're working on that from, you know, I go to the police officers. Am I right, Matt? You did go there, correct? And I'm pretty sure Roger went there. That's heavily traffic, that sidewalk there. It isn't just me. I, I, I mean, I run into people there all the time when I'm coming down on the scooter.
So what are the questions that I had with the city, the conversation is, there's two parcels. We own, we don't own, one lies in the city, one lies in the township. One is zoned, I forget what the exact zone, do you underst, do you have any light on that?
Yeah, you're talking about right, right here, it's the NASA auto and, um, and then it goes into where the old auto pond used to be.
Yes.
Paley's Auto. So part of, part of Paley's Auto, which is at the corner of, I think that's October Ridge. Part of that is city, the back end of it, city, the front end is us. But the semi area, they did submit a certificate of, um, permission of use, which was approved to, um, become a diesel repair shop. So that's its permitted use as a diesel repair shop. That's it.
Then what about the parcel that's on us? What is their, their land use for?
That, that is what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it kind of gets convoluted because it's like one big long lot. But where all the semi and the trailers are, that is, used to be the old auto pond. And, um, it's a diesel repair shop.
So it, does it fit its description of, um, are they in compliant with the type of business that they're doing there?
At, at this point, I would assume no, but the county seems to have a different idea of what a violation is, so.
So where are we at? Is the county currently taking any action or they just say?
My knowledge.
Okay. And so the parcel that is on us, they're in compliance for what they're doing, is that correct?
They are a diesel repair shop. The way that they're parking their semis and storing them outside, um, I do not know that that's in compliance with my interpretation of the zoning resolution. But that's just my interpretation.
And we've turned it into the county, correct? And the county's pretty much?
Silence.
How about nine oh six and nine twenty-eight? You have, got anything you're allowed to add, um, about those two?
I inquired about its permitted uses and was informed of that. And also, um, I was told that they are going, looking at the aerial imaging, they decided that it does appear they're not in compliance and that they are going to do an inspection and follow up on the violations and, um, send them a citation for that.
For your sakes, chief, just so to bring you up to date, that's the property
It's a six one four car.
In December and January that had someone living, living in a tent in the back of the car. Yep.
Yeah, that's up to.
And now they've removed all that vegetation, um, for theirs and all the way two, two properties down. And we have, we have a car on its side. We have a car with no tires on it.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that is a violation. Um, she did, she did confirm with me that it's in what is called the community service district. So it is permitted to be used as a, um, car sales or auto repair. But they do have certain criteria they have to follow.
Well, if we're gonna ask our employees to do something and it ruffles the feathers of other people, I'm sorry. But if that's the way the system's set up and that's how you have to do it, then that's what we do.
Um, as far as the Mark Gray property, I haven't actually received any response back when I inquired about its permitted use. I didn't get a response, um, on that yet.
Thanks for letting me say.
And you'll continue to follow up on the Mark Gray's property?
No, seriously.
I don't always make it up. I will, I will, I will do that on the way down.
So.
My hands are, my hands are kind of tied, so.
If we had the other tools that we talked about in the toolbox, we would be able to.
Uh, yes, because we wouldn't need to go through the county because we could, we could, um, sit, we could send this stuff through our law director, which would be, you know, Julie and, um, Briggs, Briggs, yeah. So we could send it to them. We wouldn't need to utilize the county prosecutor or county zoning. We could do that ourselves.
Just another prime example of why we need more tools. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate everything you do. Anything else on that, Mr. Levens? No, sir, thank you. Thank you for bringing, like I said, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Moving on, um, I am going to go out of order like we have the rest of the day. And, um, Mr. Stevens, you're up. He'd, he'd ask if he could jump the line because he asked me to detect him on the.
I appreciate the attention. On the agenda, we have on here a little bit of an update on the, on our building, which I'm glad to say we do have a little bit of one. Uh, we've been working very diligently with the back of the building and getting everything ready, getting everything cleaned up. That way when we do have a contractor come in and take a look at factors, we'll go and see exactly what it is that, that we haven't worked with. I do have, Steve, is it okay to show?
That's fine.
I do have these. This is the first rendering when we met with the architect on what he is willing or what he was able to put together for us. When Mr. Mazur and I had a meeting with him and then I met with him. Great guy. I think he's gonna be great to work with. But if you look on the first page, this is what he was able to put together for us. We walked the property, we got to see exactly what it was that he would have to work with. And when I come back in and I'm helping him on that ride, I was a bit shocked when I seen what he was able to put together.
Six base, that's pretty good.
If you look on the third page, if you look on the third page, the green building is what we're proposing to be able to do. Now, we're still waiting on some, some callbacks and something else about the county zoning to see exactly what our setbacks gonna be. The green building is what he's proposing. As you can see, it's gonna lay right up against, it's gonna run with the back property line. The little red box inside the green one, that is the building that's being torn down. Which the angle that it is laid out right here is gonna make it a lot easier for us to be able to get footmen in and out of that building. So we don't have a lot of people parking out here. We can't get in and out of this one. The distance between, if we get it laid out the way that we're hoping that we can, between the two buildings, it still leaves us just about twenty feet, which is about the distance of the two lane road. So we'll be able to get trucks in and out of there, through there, back to that point this whole part. Um, it's still in the design phase. I mean, I was asked just to give a little bit of an update on it. We are, there's some things that are gonna have to be taken, taken into consideration and taken care of prior to really going into things. One of them, and I know Mr. Mazur's already, he's working on that, will be the tornado sign on the pole and everything on the back. That's something that's gonna have to be taken down, moved. But that, little bit of an update.
It's an equipment that's been replaced with, to start with, that's seventy-five grand. The pole was no issue, just finding a place to locate. It's our responsibility to move it and pay for it. But I'm working with FEMA right now. I have a vendor that can do the pole and hook it up for us. So I just gotta verify the specs with FEMA.
That's, that's pretty much the little update that I have for today.
For, uh, I had it written down here to ask you anyway, and I, I was looking at these plans. Are you, are you considering at all putting that lean to up on that back building of yours for things for this winter? To get them out of the weather or you're not even considering that?
It's gonna be, right now with what we all have in works with, um, redoing the back parking lot and major parking because unfortunately when this building goes in, we're gonna lose a couple of parking places on this side. Putting the lean to on the back, I think maybe the easiest way is just to still work in progress.
Okay. I just was worried, like we were trying to come up with an answer to get things.
I know that, um, Chief Arnold has been working with us in allowing us to be able to put some more things up there. Naive of building up there. Kind of hoping, you know, depending on how we can get this thing going, we may be okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll make it work one way or another.
Thank you, chief.
Is there anything else, Steve, that you know that I missed going to have?
I will schedule demo, uh, next week. Got us on the schedule for demo next week.
Only other thing I have is.
Don't shoot me, don't like that.
No, 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 once I seen this, I was pretty happy. I mean, with this building compared to what we've already put together, the biggest difference is it's eighteen foot. That's about the only thing that we can make up with. Stats, uh, for July, we did thirty-one loads of brush, signs repaired throughout the township ongoing. We repaired the street signs and the stop signs and money back, replaced speed limit signs and moved group truck signs in a triangle. Moved all the township rightways, moved the cemetery twice, moved, um, the, again, Grand Avenue, moved all the rightways there. Built a line of sight on Hart Road for resident, put down three loads of grannies in the alley over off the chambers. Picked up three loads of illegally dumped trash. Boom, or maintenance dump truck made it, sent out twenty-two moleders, letters, sent out two trash letters. Moved seven hospital fifty properties. Really hasn't been raining a lot, so the grass isn't.
My blessing.
Thank you. I like that. That's good. Uh, we can continue, our preventive maintenance program that we've got along with our storm supers, we're continuing to do that. Storm drain repair on industrial mile, Laurel, building water barrel for the community garden twice. And we put down thirty-one yards of playground lots and a playground with an haven, which actually worked out well. We drove by there a couple of different times and got a lot of people out there planting.
I wanted to think, uh, where you were gone, um, that, um, I just lose his name.
Right.
Right.
Yes, because there was storm, something must have been clogged because I, my drain wasn't working for the downspouts in my sub pump and ended up burning up two sub pumps. After they did what they did, things seemed to flow and I replaced the sub pumps and, um, not.
That's kind of a, kind of a strange situation.
Yeah.
They had the flow and I'm not sure exactly what was in there.
I, well, we're seeing it and I, I've been seeing foxes run in there. I'm surprised they wouldn't be in there. But was there something, you know, where my water comes in, something lining up against it? I don't know, but it's working.
Could have been something just for temporary block.
Yeah, eight, eight, nine years ago I had the same thing, but nothing was ruined. It was on the other side of the house. And since we're the first there, I don't know if something got in there and was blocking it. I try to keep the trash before it goes in, away from that as much as possible. But thanks to Dave, we're able to come out and do that.
That was when I was on vacation, Ryan, and I kept talking about that. He called me and I'm like, I will, I can't really step on anything ground.
Yeah. So I don't know what was in there, but it's clear now.
Other than that, that is all I have. I know I was gonna ask to be excused, but Detective and I have a situation that we're working on that we're gonna go with them or look at.
Thanks for all your help with National Night Out and for dropping the cans off at the house. Your men dropped them off over at the house for me the other day, so I appreciate that. Can you get with me Monday? Need to do it on a little Monday with something. Awesome. That's all I had for you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Now, moving back to Chief Smith.
Yeah, I got work to go. First, I would like to thank everybody who attended National Night Out. Attendance, it was very warm. You know, we always try to do it on the hottest day of the year, themes. But that's national. Attendance was low, but I thought the event turned out really good. And I want to thank everybody who helped with the water and the ice. Took a lot of coordination, but we all got there.
Definitely a hot day for that.
Very hot, very hot day. But it worked out well. There's a lot of kids there. I think we passed out about forty arcane kids. So the more that we put in the community, the less ones we, we have, so. Kind of works out. Um, so the only other thing I have today is some stats, which I know we're all reading on. So before I do the regular stats, we'll do the speed trailers on industrial mile first. Uh, for the period of twenty-two July through twenty-eight July, we had eleven thousand four hundred eighty-seven cars go through. Posted speeds on that road is twenty-five miles an hour. The average was forty-two. So that's still, you know, seventeen above the posted limit. So that is why our radar to work is variable too also. The next one, we had the other trailer. The next one, we had it up, the other trailer was on Ray Avenue, same, uh, same duration. Total vehicles, two thousand seventy-one, posted speed limit again is twenty-five, and the average speed is forty. So again, fifteen over, not, not terrible, but still enough where we need to enforce it, especially with school starting again, uh, in another two weeks.
It's not a Frank Road or a Fisher Road?
No, no, it's not a Frank or Fisher Road. So right now, we have one trailer on Bellmead, the other one is in front of Franklin Heights on Demerus to get ready for, you know, school going back in session. With that said, the calls for service for July, the total number is one thousand twenty-five. And I will go through the list here. Fifteen runs of assisting other units, eight burglaries, three bad checks, two DOAs, one dog bite, six animal complaints, forty-one domestic assaults, sixteen, excuse me, alcohol-related incidents, fifteen fights, thirty-four thefts, four persons with a gun, one person with a knife, sixteen shots fired in the area, twenty-four stolen vehicles, four recovered stolen vehicles, eleven suicide attempts, ten vandalisms, seventy, uh, seventy-five threats slash harassments, seventy-eight armed drops, two sex offenses, seven overdoses, a hundred and seventy-one suspicious persons in our cars, a hundred and ten traffic stops, a hundred and four citations issued, twenty-nine vehicles in property impounded, and seventy-five reports taken.
Well, it was a twenty-five, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna verify.
It was a busy one.
It was, man, that is up there, isn't it? And the heat, too. Surprised there wasn't more fights.
Yeah, me too, but they get to go up, you know, around Christmas and also during the heat, so.
Over there on, families just can't get together. Over there on Ray Avenue, are you guys gonna be a little bit of vigil, when school gets started? Because you know that always gets backed up there? If we could like have a car over there the first couple of mornings to just like keep people going, so these residents don't have to put up with that.
And I would say, I'd say, no warnings.
And isn't it?
Right.
It's, if, you help me out, is it Chippewa or the one off?
Chippewa, yes.
So like, if you have the people coming, you know, could you not like start off on day one, knowing it's gonna be a problem? Have somebody just be out in the area?
Yeah. And, you know, in my opinion, the, 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 the school should be notifying them, so don't give them any, you know, it's ridiculous.
You're aware that there's three thousand apartments getting ready to go in from the corner of Chipp, from Chippewa all the way up to, um, Travi Road?
Yes.
Okay, how do we, and same chief, if this on your radar, trying to get through there to be able to get to an emergency, I don't know if you guys wanna, I don't, I don't know if there's anything you can come up with, or just be aware that the people at certain times, you may have to do Wilson Road to get around, but, you know, every minute counts. I, there's just nowhere to go, you can't get off the shoulder on Fisher, on Hague Avenue. If you were going up Hague, then you're going north, there's nowhere, I sat through it, I saw people pass people in people's front yards. It, it's just unreal.
I think, I, I, I sat there many, I sat there many days.
Yeah, it's, it's, it depends on where we're going, as to what route they're gonna take.
If we can notate, notate problems, because what's gonna need to be done, as many of the meetings are going to over this, they said traffic studies show that basically it's gonna be fine. The residents are smart enough to see it every day, that there, you had three thousand more people, and what percentage of them are nine to five?
Right, well, you have three thousand apartments, probably six thousand cars.
Right.
It is gonna create issues for police, fire, and pretty much everybody, um, as to what we can or can't do about it, and just try to be aware of any road blockages or congestion, trying to deal with it. I don't know about the roundabout, I'm assuming that's still in the works.
That's kinda what I've heard too. Seems like the county loves the roundabouts, I don't know.
That'll be a, that'll be a, a three-way shutdown for probably ninety days, so we'll have to wait. That'll, that'll definitely increase response times depending on where the officers come from.
Try to get across the other side.
Yeah.
So, do you, do you guys still run the St. Marita's all been annexed into the city? But do we still take calls for mutual aid there?
Where?
St. Marita.
They don't.
We don't, we haven't, we are, we have mutual aid agreement with any of you, um, but we haven't been called there.
Do you guys get anything in the St. Marita area, Travi?
Uh, we're pretty far down the list.
Okay.
It's pretty bad.
Yeah.
That's all I got, sir.
Maybe we need to, maybe, coming up with that Chippewa, that school back here, maybe we need to go ahead and be preemptive this year and try to set up a meeting and let them know. They want to pay, if, their best solution is to pay for it off to the officer, the direct traffic. If not, their, their, their people's gonna get taken in that.
Right.
One of the, the hardest issues with that, and I sat through some of the meetings with the chief, is that lies in the city of Columbus, but to get there, you're going through the township and the county. So it's like.
Well, it's a double-edged sword for us, um, we, you know, we have the resources to keep them for parting with Chippewa, which is our road, um, but if we back them up on Hague.
Hague's our road.
Hague's already, Hague's our route too, but it's already gonna be backed up. We're not gonna have resources to, like, they gotta go somewhere. You can't just poof and they go away. So if we're, meeting with the school can help, it usually takes about two weeks for them to.
Understand.
Get the hang, yeah, the hang of it, so we can, we can keep them off of Chippewa, which I think kinda worked last year.
And, um, if we're able to, um, facilitate a meeting ahead of time, as Chairman said, before it starts, and we don't have those two weeks of bombarded phone calls, which we understand the frustration. I went up there and sat there and I couldn't believe, I went through the traffic myself and watched people drive through people's yards and, to long, just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll see when Columbus starts, I know Southwestland starts in twenty-four, so, um, I'll see when Columbus starts.
I, I know, at the beginning of every school year, it's always been a problem happening on Hague Avenue. And there's no way you're getting a fire truck up there.
Nope.
Or a police car.
Nope.
There's nowhere for them to pour.
Our biggest problem is, all these schools kinda start and stop at the same time.
Yeah.
So we gotta pick the worst for the worst sometimes.
Yeah.
I think those, I think Chippewa and Ray Avenue is probably better for right now.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief, thanks for tearing that stuff down the other night, I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Steve, I know you got a few things on your side for us, you, you have any questions for me on any of that?
I've got the LT and Officer Kidwell, Officer Moore. And then, uh, we need to talk about that life lock thing after we do, um.
Okay, so Sergeant Moore was hit by a dog. So he got, I'm gonna get to brace point, he doesn't miss anywhere from it. That was the number to the WC. Lieutenant Ralph is having, uh, I wanna say shoulder surgery, or arm surgery, I think it's his shoulder, the other one. On the twelfth, so he'll be off for six weeks.
That wasn't a chondromal related injury?
No.
Okay.
And then we have Kieran Matthews sitting back there.
To approve his injury leave for when he, you know.
Matt got injured.
Spray disancho.
And he was off for more than fourteen days. So what we're gonna need to do is reimburse him for the time he took off on his injury.
Hey, you got the resolutions on that, or?
I will have those for you, but I just need to make sure you're trusting you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all injuries I have for you.
All right. Thanks for everything.
When, when is LT having a surgery?
Monday.
Hardly Monday's at fourteen already.
Yeah.
Half the month where to go.
It's rough when you get old. I'll, I'll let you know when I get there.
Will you write a book about it?
Watch me stand up. All right, Bob. I should say Chief Arnold.
Thank you, I go by many names.
Don't even be squiffy today.
Very pretty.
I don't understand how you fight fire and keep it that clean.
Well, you know.
He's a chief.
It's training, it's the training, I guarantee it.
You got good guys, it's easy, they're gonna make you look good, right?
That's right.
Uh, we'll start off with stats. Uh, nine hundred and twenty-eight total incidents. I'm saying if you're print-offs, that you have physical proof. Uh, let's see, only one cardiac arrest last month, which is astounding and.
Especially with the heat.
Amazing, yes, pretty unbelievable. Thirty-two fires, a hundred and forty-five of those were township runs, and we received help from Columbus Army. And that's it for those, unless you have questions on running numbers.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Uh, second on my list, I just wanted to thank everyone for their help and the fun we had on National Night Out. Great night, we set up one of our big nozzles and soaked all the kids, and they seemed to have an extremely good time with all that, half the parents were in it.
But I know none of our shorts and let every firefighter.
Sure, because it was hot, so that's nice, the wind would blow and it would like miss everybody and nobody complained. We did a similar event up at the Potter South Church last night, uh, it was a big hit, kids loved it. We set up a couple nozzles in our little house where we sprayed the flames off. Kids loved it, we had a great time, so, that's for all.
When's the next one?
We are going to be on, on Garrow Drive on Sunday the eighteenth, at one P M. So we're gonna get up on Garrow and soak those kids too, see if we can't flood that ditch up there.
There you go.
Jim's not here, you're not.
I was gonna say, boss, Jim's not here. A lot of giving shouts out, uh, on Sunday, Captain Aaron Welber had twenty-five years of service here at Franklin Township, which I think is remarkable. Uh, that's a full career, he's decided to go into the drop, he had some time elsewhere, so he's been in the drop for probably six months. It's a huge accomplishment, that's over a thousand runs a year for twenty-five years, just absolutely getting beat up every third day. And he's still there, and he still loves the job, and he's leading his crews as well as any captain does, so. Just a big shout out to him.
That drop is four years?
Eight.
Eight years?
Minimum of five, count that, eight, total, so we'll see how long it makes it. This kid, he just graduated his daughter this past spring, so, we'll see. He had to clean up the fire on, uh, lower level we had. They, they had that early in the morning, so his crew went and cleaned it up, and he was about to retire at like ten-thirty P M. What are you stuck with? Uh, other than that, I think that's all I have, other than Steve should have a resolution.
Yeah, I have your resolution for you.
We finalized the sale of that chassis we remounted, and brought more money than I thought it was gonna. We sold it for seventy-five hundred dollars. The chassis with a giant hole in the back of the cab, no brake lights, the exhaust. Yeah, it's plastic wrapped right now.
Yeah.
Two hundred and ten thousand miles, and a lot of miles, but, thank you, we'll take it.
You had to help someone out.
Yep.
So that resolution is twenty-two-four dash one-one-nine, it's a resolution authorizing the board of trustees to sell a fire department medic chassis on Gov. deals. Whereas the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, has adopted a resolution pursuant to O R C five oh five point one zero, authorizing a sale of a two thousand seventeen Ford F-four-fifty chassis with the VIN one F D U F four eight T six eight D A zero six seven four six. None other used by the Franklin Township Fire Department on Gov. deals to the highest bidder.
So moved, as the resolution's written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yeah.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Chief, I know that we sold a, uh, medic once before with that kinda miles, and we only got five thousand, and that was with the box on it, and not just, and so that is amazing. If I remember, two good old boys from West Virginia came and got that one, barefooted.
The, uh, they have not told us who the buyer was, the dogs had just ended, so we should find out who and where they're coming from. They can't drive it, just got it towed.
Yeah, they, the last one, the guy just come picked it up. Guy said that they stepped on that grated step, barefooted, didn't flinch a bit, and stepped right up there and drove it home. It's amazing.
I hope it's still running. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I got something for you, sir. Bob, uh, I stopped in and talked to, uh, Stuart, he's the union steward. And he said, once the ballot, uh, was, once, uh, we got our ballot straight and everything, the union would, um, maybe do some signs, or do you? With early voting and everything, so are they planning on getting this going soon?
That is underway, we should have, uh, pamphlets with verbiage, uh, we already have the signs, we just need to get together and get them out.
Well, um, I, I know that Mr. Mazer had reached out to the pastor, um, Wallmac down here at the church, um, about us holding one of the meetings down there, not sure if it's for that or not, but he has a real nice, uh, projection thing in there, and you'll be able to do your, your slideshow there and everything, so. Okay, I'm good with that, but I just wanted to let you know. I, I don't, I think Mr. Mazer's working on.
I've confirmed Pastor Wallmac both, uh, August nineteenth and September ninth at six thirty.
Okay. And I was just letting you know, there's a real, Byron, that has a real nice, uh, I don't know, I'm assuming if you got the screen, there's probably a projector there too. But, uh, it, it'll work really well and you'll be able to present. But I thought, just put me down for a sign, if you can let the guys know, if you do signs, whatever you do, I just want, I'll have something in my yard or whatever.
You're working on it.
Okay.
Just got with the, uh, international. A little earlier, if that's the case. Let me funding, so they've been, I know they've made contact with international, they're just working on funding to get, yeah, it's pretty. That's where that's at, and if any, I encourage anyone, if you have questions about the law, please call me, email me. My email should be on the website.
Even if your neighbors ask you, send the Bob.
I'll be a hundred percent transparent and as honest as, as they may.
Bring it up. Don't answer everything, though. All right, Fiscal Department, I'm assuming Mr. Mazer, your hands are in the air?
I have it. I have it, um, just two things. The first is a motion to approve accounts payable for August eighth, twenty twenty-four, and be resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, and the board approves a motion to approve accounts payable from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four through April eighth, twenty twenty-four, amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. And check number seven zero five nine five two seven zero six two eight. And electronic vouchers, one, two, eight, three, twenty twenty-four through thirteen seventy-four, twenty twenty-four.
So moved, as the motion's written. I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Is that all you have for, uh, Fiscal, Steve?
One more, one more, Michael.
I have something too, so I just wanted to.
This one is a motion to approve payroll, uh, as presented on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, being resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve payroll for the elected officials for paid pay in July one.
for pay paid July one, twenty twenty-four through July thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And payroll for period July fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents. A C H deposits on August one, twenty twenty-four, and August second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, electronic vouchers, one two eight nine, twenty twenty-four through thirteen fifty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
So moved, this, uh, resolution's written? I'd ask for a second.
All second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Yes. Real quick, Matt, can you knock on Robin's door and see if she can step out here, I need to ask her two questions. I thought she was gonna be at the table today, and I was just going to ask her, could you step up here, please, Robin, I appreciate it.
I wanted to ask you about positive pay, and the reason being, I asked the question two weeks ago, and I just really, I don't think the answer that was given really described what positive pay does. So briefly, can you give us a description and tell us how positive pay works? In the bank account? What you do at the end of the days?
You have concerns?
No, I don't. No, I do, I'm the one.
She was looking at John, I thought they were.
No, no, that was something else.
Okay. So you want me to describe the process of positive pay?
Just tell, just tell us how it works. Okay, here, it was described at the last meeting that two, that positive pay had found two more bad checks. And then, when I questioned you about that, I found out that positive pay hadn't even been implemented yet.
Yeah, positive pay was implemented last Thursday.
Correct, just this past Thursday. This past Thursday.
Past Thursday, a week ago today.
Okay.
Okay, because it's a, it was a long process of getting it implemented, I was working diligently between Red Group, those are I T people, and P N C Bank. Because the way it works is it's a separate software within the banking system, um, that requires some coding that I have no idea how to do. So that's why Red Group was involved. So it took the process of Red Group talking behind the scenes with P N C Bank, finding out exactly what the coding needed to be. Because when we do the upload, so you need the process on my end, is like, all these checks that you just signed today, I went into you end and I do what's called an export. Which basically, it exports the list into an Excel spreadsheet, and it puts all the checks that you've just now signed into a document. Then that document, then, is what we upload with the help of Red Group, you know, we're uploading into P N C. And then basically, these checks lock in. And so the bank will positively pay those checks only.
Not any others.
And no other checks. And so if you're referring to the last, I'm not sure which check she was referring to as far as.
Nor was I, and I, and that's why I said.
But the last two bad checks, I caught those, that had nothing to do with positive pay. So I think she might have been confused with the timeline or something, but we've had four bad checks total. Last two I caught, because I was coming in every morning and checking our bank account, and looking for the pending, because at the top you get your pending for your day's transaction, anything pending, I'm checking, and then immediately I screenshot it, send it to our bank app and say, don't pay. So I caught the last two, so there's only been four, not six, because I do want people to, to think we had a continual problem. And, and that positive pay pretty much ensures that they're only gonna pay what we tell them to pay. So if a, if a bad check generates from this point forward.
You'll get a notification.
Right, they're not even gonna consider paying at all, like, it's not gonna slide through, because it can't.
I had a question, when we, the first time, you know, we've had some checks that were mailed before, and people wash them and do that. So with, with the new way that that's, that has taken place, the last two checks were checks with our signatures, the board signatures, is that correct?
Yes.
So I understand if someone takes, this is disturbing to me, because I don't understand how we go about having a check that has our signatures on it, how did someone get a hold of, uh, a check with our signatures on it? Because in other ways that we've seen is the old, get it out the mailbox, dip it, write it out to yourself.
Right.
And there, that's where it will be protected at the bank, because who it's made to doesn't match up with what you, you've got. But do we have any idea how sophisticated or how in the world somebody out there were able to duplicate, take our signatures and put it on a new check that they basically created?
I mean, it could be possible, and there's, there's variables, I mean, it's variables, I mean, you would hope that it wouldn't be one of our vendors, because you know, that stack of checks is going out.
Right, they could, they scan it to get our signatures.
The checks are still clearing the bank from these vendors. So it's not like, and what's nice about positive pay too is you can, like, I just went through in all the checks that you guys signed two weeks ago, there's only two that haven't cleared. So I keep track of those two checks, and I'll call the vendor here, and then I'll give him a little bit more time, because mail's a little slow, and I'll give him a call and say, hey, why haven't cashed that check yet? So positive pay is very helpful in that sense of the word too, because it alerts you of what's not been paid. So I can't really answer your question though, because these checks are gonna go in the mail, and they're gonna be in the possession of someone when they open the envelope.
Gotcha.
So we can only hope that our vendors are true, and they would not be, you know.
Scanning that check.
Scanning them, and then ultimately selling them on the black web or wherever, because once their signature's out there, it's out there.
One more quick thing, ma'am, are you familiar with a company, um, called Clover, and, um, it has to do with the credit card machine in Nicole's office? I received a text from Nick Dunn, and Nick has been gone for two years, and he is getting information from the bank account about this credit card machine. Are, do you under, do you know what it is I'm talking about, and do you have the ability to speak on it? Because it looks like from what he sent me, is we're being charged twenty-six dollars, uh, fee, for lack of a better word, and ten dollar charge for a check, or a returns check, or something like this, that this is not set up properly, and he asked me to take care of this immediately. He wants his, he wants his name to be removed from that, and it seems like he spoke to you or Lindsay, and so I'm now taking care of it, and I'm asking you, do you know anything about it, and how do we go about changing? It's a little concerning with everything we have going on in the township, we're considering implementing this and stuff like that, the, um, lifelock.
Okay.
You know, that, that, Nick's been gone for two years, and he's getting stuff, information sent him about our checking account, I think that's very concerning.
They had reached out, um, and what Clover is, just so that everybody at the table, let me go back. Um, when Nick was here, just so we connect, connect Nick to the dots, is that when Nick, Nick was here, he was the one, as the fiscal officer, implemented the credit card machine at Nicole's window, you know, he put that all in play. So they have him down as basically the foundation. Well, when they reached out to me a while back, I said, it no longer works here, here is Lindsay's information. I said, how can I help you? And they're like, we have to work directly with the fiscal officer, so I will need to reach out to the, the new fiscal officer. So Clover's been attempting to resolve this with Lindsay for probably, I'm going to say, a minimum of six months.
They can't get together in six months?
And the letters keep coming, John, there's one in her mailbox now, there's one on my desk that came right before she left, and there's, in her office, she has to have letters. And so two things have occurred, unfortunately. Um, because when, when they first sent the very first letter, it said that they needed verification from the township that our facilities or property insurance, that we, that we have such, because if something happened in the machine.
Right.
Somebody stole it, we had a fire, but I remember I came in and asked you for the benefit page or whatever it was. Well, I sent it over, well, then Nick came back and said, no, we can't take it from you, we have to, it must be from the fiscal officer. So I said, okay, so I told her, told her, and then these letters have been coming. And then as it moved along, the letter say, if you don't respond, we are going to automatically put insurance on the machine. So that's what the twenty-six dollars is that you're referring to.
Oh, it's not the cost of the machine.
No, it's the insurance that we could have avoided, if, if we would, and so now the problem, two problems, is that they need, they need to know if we had insurance, which we do, which arm recovers all of our machines and all of our equipment, they needed to know that before the twenty-six dollars started, but unfortunately, that didn't happen, so the twenty-six dollars just kicks in, and it's automatically deducted from our bank account.
I'll wait till you finish, I have a question.
Okay, so the problem became, is this implemented with our old bank account? And so Jeff came to me one month, and he's like, what is this, twenty-six dollars? He was reconciling, we had this mysterious twenty-six dollars, and I said, it just says, um, P N C withdrawal, you know, it doesn't give you a definition.
Right.
Excuse me, if it had said Clover, then I would have recognized it right away, and I said, Jeff, I'm not sure what the twenty-six dollars is. Until one of these letters shows up, and then a letter shows up and says, you know, we're billing you now for twenty-six dollars, so I go back to Jeff and I said, okay, we can reconcile the twenty-six dollars, because we know what it is. Well then, the problem thus becomes is that we have closed our old bank account for, for withdrawals, nothing may come out. And so when I said, this is connected to our bank account, now the letters are asking her, the ten dollars I'm going to guess is a bank fee.
Because it bounced back.
Because it bounced back, and it's getting ready to bounce back again.
And how many would you estimate has been, are we talking two months, three months?
Probably two months of the bouncing back, because we just closed that account with, like, locking the withdrawal part in early July, so depending upon when they bill, they could bill early August, so we might get hit for two so far, so now we went from twenty-six to thirty-six. When, to answer your question, ultimately, we shouldn't have to pay this fee at all. If the initial communication had happened at the beginning, getting the benefit form from Steve and her sending it over. Because unfortunately, I can't do anything about this, they won't let me in because I'm not the fiscal officer, they're looking for Lindsay.
Sure.
In that role, and then, well, really, there's a third problem, sorry, I just keep rolling with this machine, since you brought it to my attention. The bank reached out to me looking for Nick again, different people, different department, because I reached out to say, hey, we got a new bank account, how do we get Nicole's transactions to drop into the new account? We don't want the old one. And they're like, sure, and so they start looking into it, so a different person, because there's levels in P N C Bank, reaches out and says, is Nick Dunn there? Nope, Nick Dunn's not here. So I have to give them Lindsay's information, I said, how can I help with this? They're like, she needs to sign an electronic document, we will email it to her. She signs it electronically, pushes the button, and we will convert the machine to the new account. And I said, great, so this was like three weeks ago. And so I followed up with the gentleman, asked, and said, hey, how, what's the update, do we know for sure, because I'm noticing the transactions are still dropping in the old account. And he said, we're at the mercy of Lindsay, I'm so sorry. So again, I can't do anything at that either.
Sure.
So, and she's aware, and so he reset the email at least twice, waiting for, this is just an electronic signature.
I understand.
So we're kind of got in a little bit of a, little bit of a muddy spot right now with the credit card machine, unfortunately.
All right, thanks for answering the question. I think pos, I, my main concern was that people know that positive pay is a great thing, and another thing about positive pay is you have to enter them every night. So has Lindsay learned how to enter positive pay if you weren't here at the end of the day when checks have, irregardless whether it's this stack of checks, or you have to just write out a check during the day for anything, does Lindsay know how to enter checks into positive pay at the end of every day?
Yeah.
That could be a problem, because hypothetically, if, and you're human, just like all of us, you had to go to a doctor or something and you're off work, or you take vacation, I'm just doing all the head here, no, you took a vacation.
Yeah, that is horrible, yeah.
Yeah, let's not, let's not give her a bad shot.
Yeah, we, these checks right here that we just signed, there's probably a hundred or so of those. If those are not turned into positive pay, that's gonna be a nightmare, isn't it?
Right, because they don't have checks to check, I mean, they're gonna just let them go through like normal.
Because they won't match the date.
Because they won't match dates, because the only positive pay is that the township, it's our job to put it in.
Right, right.
Because they're not gonna be looking for anything but whatever's in positive pay.
Every one of those will have a fee for.
Oh, sure. So.
Mr. Mazur, can you set up a special meeting next week?
I have a question for Robin.
Oh, sorry, Steve, I forgot you, sorry.
Being a, a year or two ago, trustees passed a resolution, will you have the authority in the absence of a fiscal officer to sign documents? Do we need anything special to take care of the Clover? Can we send them a copy of the resolution that gives you the authority to sign in place of a fiscal officer? Because you and I have talked, we're moving that way, I'm gonna be blunt, we are moving that way now, where I've requested you start signing everything for the fiscal officer. Can we do this with Clover?
I mean, I can try, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what their regulations are, as far as if it's standard, that it must be.
They may recognize the board, uh, the board's motion in that.
You may have to send them a copy of the resolution.
Sure, which I will do, um.
But yeah, could you look into that, please? I can't speak for everyone, but I would urge you to take care of it.
Absolutely.
Sooner than later.
Yes, I can, I can look into it, can't promise that they're gonna agree to it, but we can certainly try.
No, 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 no. No, and there's a document here that I'm presenting to the trustees, the same thing, we removed the, the F O, and we put you on, because it's a document I need signed and sent. I, I don't have time to wait, okay?
Right.
Okay.
Can you please update us on, on, if I, if you can get that taken care of, just a quick email, I know you're busy, but just taking, Clover's taken care of, would be suffice me.
Mr. Leeser, you asked me now, I didn't mean to, I just didn't want to let you lose my train of thought, a special meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next week.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that the pastor is going to an exec?
Yes. No, I'm gonna say yes.
Do we want Julie here as well?
No.
We can get her on the phone, is there a day that's, I know Tuesdays are bad, Michael, what's good?
Um, I, I, well, Tuesday's good for me, but I can make other days work, how about, is everybody good, maybe Wednesday or Thursday afternoon? I mean, what about you, Jane?
I'm good, yeah.
You guys have jobs, I'll make it work for me.
Tuesday's the fourth, so, with this coming Wednesday? Then that's the.
That's the fourteenth, or fifteenth?
Fifteenth, Monday.
Can it just be after ten?
Say.
Is that good?
Ten thirty left?
Ten's great, I mean, ten gives me all the time I need.
Thank you.
I'll send that out.
All right, do you have anything else for us? I don't, sir, I'm sorry about all that.
No, you're fine.
It has to be done.
Thank you for bringing that up, I mean, I, I wasn't here.
It was very concerning, and I, I never know when I'm allowed to talk to you guys and tell you things, so I knew we were having a meeting today, so I did it. But stop and think real quick, I know you wanna move on, there was also a fiscal officer in between Nick and Lindsay, do you understand what I'm trying to say? Yeah, so there was Margaret Reed, I think she lasted two or three months, and then Lindsay's been here over a year, and we still can't get, there's just.
Just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving parts.
Well, thank you, Mike, and, um, I think we can talk without any time, as long as we don't make decisions.
Well, as long as we're in this.
In this meeting, yeah. No, but I meant to give you the meaning about this.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Mazur, it looks like, uh.
Couple more things, yes, yes, sir, I have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twenty, it's a resolution approving financial, a financial recovery agreement with COSIC. Uh, they resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio proves the township administrator the authority to enter an agreement with COSIC. The agreement will allow COSIC to recover any demolition costs incurred regarding properties located at twelve forty Gladstone Avenue and ten fifty-three Brown Road. Notably, COSIC's demolition costs have been covered through the disposal of the property through a share sale. It is the intention of this. It is the intention of this sale that Franklin Township is wholly reimbursed for any expenses that have occurred in connection with the demolition process. They have firmly resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees have resolved in such formal action. We're in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all the requirements, including section one two, one point two-two of the ORC.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two-one. Obligations approved by the Township Administrator between July twenty-third, twenty twenty-fourth and August eighth, twenty twenty-four. The Board of Trustees, a resolution twenty twenty-one thirty authorized the administrator to approve and cover obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one-one of the ORC. Pursued to the provisions of five oh seven point one-one A of the Ohio Revised Code. The obligations approved and incurred by the Township Administrator must be subsequently approved by the adoption of a formal resolution of the Board of Township Trustees. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. The total is thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
So moved as the resolution is written, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So on the air conditioner unit, the last time I heard anything on that, we thought we were gonna have to replace it and it looks like we were able to repair it.
We repaired it and I'm waiting on a quote for.
Oh, so we may still have, because I thought that was awful cheap.
It's a band-aid, yeah, it's a band-aid. But I'm still waiting on a quote for.
It's expensive, man. I have been, oh, it's not cheap. It's not cheap, but I'm just saying that you're not gonna get a brand-new unit for that, is what I'm trying to say. That's all I had, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, hearing that, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Blevins?
Did we say?
Yes.
You did, yeah. Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure we didn't.
I got you for something.
Then the last thing I have, and I gave, I gave the trustees a copy of the LifeLock information for your review. With all the, I shouldn't say all, but with some of the episodes and issues we've had with some of our banking and credit accounts. It may be something the trustees, for the employees' sake, may wanna offer some type of protection to the employees. And you'll, take your time and go through, we can discuss this further, but there's three separate plans. And pricing is included in the information that you have.
I think I saw.
Like I said, there's three different plans and three different, three different types of coverage.
Which plan did you, because on this page here, we have the eight forty-nine, eight dollars and forty-nine cents. And that's employee client. Do we know, I wish that the, it would be nice if we had the person here from.
We can do that.
Recommend, so that they could answer the questions because I'm definitely of support of this for all of our issues that we have going on with checks. I'm sure it's happening everywhere. But the nightmare of your information getting out and the nightmare of cleaning it all up. At least having this, they would do work on your behalf. And then all you have to do is go to work. You don't have to chase this, copy this, get this notarized. I mean, it would be a nightmare.
Exactly.
So the thing that I would ask you, because we have unions, is this going to be a called, a terminate perk until further notice? Or is this something that's gonna be added to the union contracts? I mean, we're not looking at a lot of money, eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
Not even that much.
But how do we implement, oh, three dollars and ninety, well, it depends on which one. Three dollars and ninety-nine cents per person.
I mean, I don't think, one, it would depend, is this gonna be an employer benefit where the employer pays? Or is it gonna be something that you're gonna pass on to the employee?
That's what I'm asking.
So I don't think.
Are we, are we paying a portion of it?
Union wise, if we're paying it.
Yeah, they usually aren't gonna have an issue with one review.
No, but when I had their family, that would be on them, that might, that would have to be an MOU through the union.
Right, and I think, I think that's something that can just lead up to the union member. If they wanna add additional coverage, then.
Yeah, because I'm just sitting here thinking, later in the future, who knows who sits in these seats? It comes bargaining time. I mean, we're only bargaining over three dollars and ninety-nine cents, I get that. But if the township is supplying that to them versus charging them. Did Chairman, I'd like to hear from Matt.
It's just like the legal services though that the township offers us. That's not part of our union contract.
Yeah.
The ARAG or, I don't know what it's called, but.
Right, right. That's just for the police though, only.
No, that's township-wide.
We all get legal?
Yeah.
I didn't think it was, I thought we looked into that and it was not. It was only for the police.
It's ESA or EZD.
Yeah, that.
And anyway, this would be like an expense for.
It would be just like some of the things that the township offers us, that's not even part of the union.
But if they wanna add their families, I mean.
Yeah. Because I'm curious, I can swear I looked into that and it was only for the police only.
No, that's, that's something.
For the legal difference.
That's when they're involved in the shooting.
You, you, you're there, we can, we can further discuss it at the next meeting.
Can you get the person from LifeLock to come up?
We can do that.
In the next meeting or meeting after next?
I, I will, I will do it.
Because it's definitely something that we need, I think we should move on to.
Sooner than later.
Yes.
I mean, I think it's important to get it done quickly.
I couldn't, I couldn't concur more with, especially our signatures are out there. And you're, I don't know who watches Dateline or not, but some of the scary thoughts that someone comes knocks on your door and go, what are you doing in my home? And they've actually retitled the house legally into their name. And you're getting asked to leave and you're like, I've owned this house for X amount of years. And, you know, you don't have a say until you go to court, so that's scary to see that, that it's all done like computer, that someone can do that.
We're in, we're in this area of acting. I know of seven companies that's been ransomwared, City Columbus has been ransomwared.
Anything that we can do to help protect our employees as a benefit, I'm definitely on board with.
All right, anything else for us?
That's all I have for you.
I have spoken up, I have nothing else. John, you have anything else?
I did, but I don't see the person, so.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything?
I do, I just wanna give a report on.
She's right out there.
Community engagement, we have a winner. So the total for the run was nineteen fifty-three. And we have a Christopher that was the winner. He came in at sixteen seventy-six. So I will reach out to Mr. Christopher and let him know. And the purpose of this was to draw a little bit of attention on our first responders, on how many runs they have and everything. And you heard, you know, nineteen hundred and fifty-three runs in a month and everything. And we're going to be coming to the voters, people at home, you all here today, asking for you to pass a fire levy. And it's of the utmost importance that we get this taken care of. And I was hoping that this would draw a little bit of attention to it. So Mr. Christopher will be receiving this weekend a twenty, or a fifty-dollar Gary Queen card that we've given away. We need to help this fire department out. So I would say to people at home, take a look at your homeowner's insurance policy. Because if this levy does not pass, we are more than likely going to lose a fire station. If we lose a fire station, your homeowner's insurance will probably go up. Because your insurance company looks at response times for them to get to your home. And I know a lot of people say to me, well, we have a lot of runs into Columbus. If we didn't have mutual aid, we only have two ambulances, we only staff two fire departments. So if we're gonna have a heart attack, are we gonna make an appointment to have our heart attack? Because one of our engines could be up in Broad Lawn, one of them could be down here in the triangle. And I might decide to pass over on Ransburg, so I'd call up and make an appointment. So honestly, everybody, just consider, if you look at the overall, what we're asking for, the, if we do not pass this levy, your insurance will go up and other things. And we're asking you to consider taking a strong look. We're gonna have meetings as a board, you heard us discuss two of them. I know they threw out the dates, I don't have them off the top of my head. But come out, Bob has put together a great visual to, projection to show how it works and everything. There's no hidden agenda here, he'll answer any questions you have. And that's all I got today, sir.
All right. You got somebody? Yes. She back in? Brenda's back in. I didn't see you out there, I didn't know that you were there. If you'd like to come up.
Actually, I'm short of leave because I'm done with this. I'm done with the names in the township. You guys have known Lindsay's record for how long? Are you, I actually contacted the auditor's office today, okay? And I, I've started the affidavit. Are you three willing to sign that to start the investigation, to get her out?
Well, we're having an executive meeting. I'm not supposed to speak till you're done, I apologize. We scheduled, I don't know if you were in the room or not, but we have an executive meeting coming up on that. Most likely, we can't say exactly what the executive meeting is, but we are addressing it.
Well, something needs to be done. It is going on too long and you guys are like, well, she's elected official, you know? And yes, she, she's elected official, she ran unopposed. And the person that's doing all the financials in this place is that woman in that room right there. And I think she's doing one heck of a job for us. And you guys, you guys don't really care about the township, I don't feel. Okay, Jim, you know, you're chuckling, that's funny, okay? Well, you're the one that doesn't show up to anything. Yeah, you showed up at National Night Out, okay? And do you care that we are getting ready to lose more Franklin Township property to be annexed into the city of Columbus for three thousand apartments? That we have no infrastructure for? I'm, I'm very upset with all of you. Everyone in this room. The only people that have been doing the damn good job here is the fire department and the police department and the road crew. You guys need to either straighten up or just give it all away to the city of Columbus because that's exactly what you're doing. And that's all I got to say.
I wanted to comment on that.